Let's call the meeting to order, the Bratton Borough Planning Commission for Monday, November 5th, 2018. I have no announcements, but Sue, maybe you do.
I don't.
All right then, let's move right along to approving.
Well, one thing. So, I'm going to the State Housing Conference. Liz is going. It's Wednesday, November 14th. Was anybody else interested in attending?
It's a full day. It's in Burlington.
That's my volunteer service day.
Just wanted to throw it out there if anybody's interested.
Good excuse.
Seriously. Or a diversion program.
Oh, yeah. Okay. All right, let's look at these meeting minutes. Do we need to approve the September minutes?
We do, because we did approve them. We didn't have a quorum last time. Yeah, we didn't have a quorum, people that had been at the September meeting.
So, can we do both at once?
Does it matter who votes? Because it's a September meeting, we can vote on those. And I was up after the meeting.
They can, you can vote. If you've reviewed them, you can vote. So, let's get everybody a minute to review and...
Okay, well, September 8th. Which one are we on?
Well, these are the October 15th.
Well, and the September 5th is attached as well.
Is it?
Yeah, they're behind.
Look at that. It's all double sided. Bless you. Oh, well, I can update you all on the fact that the Act 250 permit for the groundworks was revised and it no longer needs one. The determination was revised.
So, we're just approving the minutes?
Yes. All right. Let's start with September 5th. Want to make a motion to approve the minutes?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of September 5th and October 15th. We got it?
Mm-hmm.
And September 5th and, yeah.
Second?
Second.
Jessica, thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hold on. Public comment?
Yeah.
You lost me.
All right. Brownfields, Brownfields.
All right. So, there's a lot of papers here.
There are.
Are they here?
I carry this pouch with me with all the papers. So...
Do you want a notebook?
Well, no, I was gonna say, you never need to give me another copy, because I just keep shoving away this pouch.
Oh, so you print it off and...
Well, no, no, whatever you gave us last time. If you always give us new stuff, then I always need it.
It's new stuff. Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. It's just, we're still working on signs. So, yeah. So, you guys have a copy of this, which doesn't show it, because color printing is expensive. So, the really dark color on yours is red, which means that work is done.
But is this...
That's the second page.
Oh, okay.
That's petroleum. So, we look first at the hazardous. We have about $53,289 left to spend by September 30th, 2019. Right now, we're working archeology. It should be archaeology. I signed a contract with Northeast Archaeology Research Center out of Maine. They're doing a Phase 1 archaeological resource assessment down at 250 Bird Street. That's the floodplain restoration project. Because they have federal cleanup funds, we need to follow Section 106, which is a federal...
A groupie.
Yeah, federal groupies. So, they have to kind of look at the site for sensitivity for archaeological resources. They are actually gonna be onsite on Friday doing that work. So, we put out an RFP for that work.
Come meet the archaeologists.
Yeah.
Well, they're having the backhoe and all that?
Yeah. So, the town is, they're gonna do a little field truthing while they're out there. And so, Public Works is sending a person, a staff member, and a backhoe, so they can kind of look at what's the stratigraphy.
Which would save them from saying, "There might be something," and then having to come out again, so they're only gonna come out once, which I think is such an idea.
What was the term you used?
Stratigraphy?
No, 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 the other one.
Ground truthing.
Ground truthing. What is that?
They basically wanna get a look at the layers of the soil to see what it's, I guess, whether or not...
They wanna dig out until it's undisturbed soil from the gravel and so forth that's there, to see if there's any archaeological artifacts below that.
I think it's, yeah, they're not necessarily looking for the artifacts right now, as to looking at the... But they can't go below four feet, because then you have to put a dig box in them. And so, they're going about four feet down to kind of look.
And if they say that it's disturbed and it's compromised, then they don't need to go any further.
This is not your experience with...
Do you have a question?
What?
I'm just, no. I've never heard ground truthing. It's an interesting term. That's what they, you know, who's ever heard of that before? You've all heard of it.
I hear it all the time.
I haven't heard of ground truthing.
But I live alone.
Yeah. So, that's what they're gonna be doing. So, if you want, go out Friday morning, you'll see them. They're gonna walk the site Thursday afternoon.
Is that, do the state archaeologists have to like, it's satisfied if we do this through the...
Well, he will get a copy of the report. And basically, at the end of the report, my guess is, because I've not seen one of these, is they're gonna make a determination whether kind of Phase 2, which is actual archaeological digs, are required.
Yeah.
And the state archaeologists will need to sign off on the, whatever the report is.
So, the state archaeologists, but ultimately, it's HUD, because it's a federal program.
And is there any documentary evidence that this is a potential archaeological site? Or do we just do this every time we have to dig in the ground?
You do this every time there's a federal authorization involved. Because of NEPA, this is the Federal Environmental Policy Act.
Yeah. And because there's EPA funds on the site, the state Historic Preservation Office is the one that said, well, the way it happens is, our EPA project manager has to notify the state that there's some activity going on on the site. And then the state Historic Preservation Officer gets to say whether or not they think assessment work needs to be done. And so, it can be historic structures and it can be archaeological. This site probably is a sensitive site, given that it's kind of in a valley along a riverbank.
Hmm.
So...
But it's all federal decision making, which would be the EPA, or the Army Corps, or whoever. That decision needs to follow the NEPA rules.
And is Section, is it Section 106 from NEPA? Or is it Section 106 referring to in the store?
No, I think it's the Federal Historic Preservation Act.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, this is the first time I've had to do one.
That's interesting.
Cool. Yeah. Yeah.
So, there's $53,000 of what?
There's $53,000 left for hazardous substance assessment and cleanup planning. So, if a property's gonna transfer and...
Can I see that?
The right one, yeah. Actually, that's an older one. Sorry, so it's $50,000.
So, Sue, do we, do you anticipate, like, of all of the stuff for 250 Bird Street, can you anticipate, are there gonna be additional things?
Yes.
I mean, there could be a Phase 2, but are there gonna be other things that the $50,000 might go to?
So, that brings me to my next one. There needs to be permitting work done for this site for the floodplain restoration and the cleanup. There's likely an Act 250 permit required. There is an Army Corps of Engineers permit, because they're working in the Brook. There's river management, there's stream alteration permit. So, there's a couple of permits required. I have reached out to Mylon and McBroom, who had done the wetlands delineation and had been involved with the site. And they have given, permitting is something that we can pay for with our funds.
With these funds?
Yeah.
Really?
Because it's considered cleanup planning.
Okay.
Yeah. So, their estimate is $26,500 for the permitting. They have to bring some plans to final design. Right now, the plans we have are like a 50% conceptual design phase. They wanna take it to 90%, then go through permitting, and then finalize them. I've had a conversation with a consultant to see if we don't, if the plans we have are good enough to go through permitting. And they are checking in with the different agencies to see if more is going to be required. So, it could be less than the $26,500, but that's what they have given me a quote at for now.
So, there's still a little bit of balance, if there's other possible projects. And there's enough here to cover all the things needed for 250.
Yeah. So, I wanted to see, for me, are you all okay with spending up to $26,500 on permitting for this site?
I am, but I'm a river steward, so I may be biased. So, probably, which site is it?
It's the Bird Street site. So, it's definitely a high priority site for the town, for the state.
I'm like, so excited about that site, so I would probably say yes.
Okay, so what are the permits for $26,000?
So, the ones, let's see, that they have put... So, what they're quoting is taking the plans to semifinal design for $13,000, and then permitting and construction plans for $13,500. They have estimated the Act 250, which may or may not, Vermont Stream Alteration, general permit, a U.S. Army Corps of Engineer general permit. They have local approval on here. They did receive the local permit for this, so...
So, can you knock some money off of it?
Yeah. I mean, right now, he's checking into the agencies to see what's required. You know, we agreed not to sign any contracts until, because he will revise if he doesn't need to take the plans as far. I guess what I would like is an authorization from you all as kind of the steering committee for Brownfields to allow up to $26,500 for the permitting and design.
It takes away half the money, so we've got less left.
It does.
Do we have anything else we need to worry about?
So, there's one other potential project that I know that would come through hazardous that is probably an asbestos abatement, maybe an actual Phase 2, but it could be, I shouldn't say abatement, asbestos assessment. I was hoping they were gonna get paperwork in today, but they did not. It's... I'm not sure how out there it is yet, so until I have paperwork, I'd probably rather not say I think it would be worthwhile. If we were doing the asbestos assessment, we're looking at maybe $4,000.
Is it the case where we have to use this funds by the end of the year?
We do. We got a one-year extension. We have to use it by September 30th, so it's not like sitting on it.
So, it's by next September 30th?
Yeah. And that was with an extension. And, yeah. The good thing is, is that they're putting out guidelines for another round of grant funding, so the more we can draw this down...
Right.
And commit puts us in a better position to seek more hazardous funding.
That sounds great.
So...
And then we have this list, so that we can document future needs.
Yeah. And what is also good is, even if we run out of our money, the Wyndham Regional Commission has some funding. Their funding is getting low as well, and I think they're gonna go in for more grant funding. But right now, they could potentially be a backup if we find ourselves with not very much left in the pot, and we have something that comes up.
Is there any reason to hold off on approving the 26 until we hear what the architecture is, or the architecture, the...
I don't, I don't think, what you're asking for is permission to negotiate based on what the permits actually are.
Okay.
I mean, you're wondering if they need to do more archaeological work.
You'd have the archaeologists come back with something that's...
The good thing about this, too, is that Vermont River Conservancy has a cleanup grant. And these are all funds that can be used as, from their cleanup grant. But then it takes away from how much money they actually have to do the floodplain restoration. So, what we're trying to do, because this is high priority, this will be the town's property afterwards, if the SLAB board accepts it, is that we're trying to maximize their funds for cleanup, because our funds cannot be used to actually clean the soil, you know, take it off-site. So, if we got into a situation where we didn't have enough for a Phase 2 or archaeological, they do have access to funds. It just kind of takes away from their cleanup. So, we're kind of all working together and trying to maximize the cleanup funds for actual cleanup.
That sounds great.
Yeah. Sounds awesome.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, it would be, it would be good.
So, I move that we give you the 26 whatever to motion people.
I'd say good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go. That was a whatever motion.
Go ahead, Sue.
Yeah, my friend.
We can get it. So, we've got two other sites that we're working on. There is the 48 Elm Street site. That is the cinder block building down at the Tri-State Diesel, the New England Youth Theater Building, the one that's got the, that's falling down, that's got the tarp over it. Yeah. So, they're trying to take down that cinder block addition like before winter. We needed to do some more assessment of the paint situation in there, and so, that's what the work that was done recently, the $9,100, was, they basically found that the first floor is painted on the inside, there's some light blue paint, and that does have PCB in it, just like the rest of the building. That's why that building is kind of sitting there, because it's...
PCB in the paint?
Yes. So, the paint, the building was owned by a paint manufacturer, a road paint manufacturer. And so, they took their red paints and, you know, spruced up their offices or something. And so, the PCB is down in the concrete, or the split block and...
Wow.
It used to be using mortar, too.
Wow.
Really?
Brick mortar.
Huh.
Or caulk, caulked, too.
Really?
Maybe not the mortar, the caulked, and then it migrated out to the mortar in some cases.
Yeah. So, the brick building, the brick part of the building is just really, really expensive, because it's PCB all in there, so the...
Or get cleaned.
Or get cleaned, but the question is, if they got cleaned, how much brick would you be losing? Because it's saturated.
So, it has to be taken down and then put in an authorized disposal location.
Right. So, it's very expensive. That's why it sits there in that state. The cinder block addition, you know, two winters ago, had like a roof leak, or it was two years ago. So, that's kind of slowly falling apart, but it's been, the demolition of the cinder block addition has been held up because of this paint issue. So, anyway, they've confirmed the first floor has PCBs in it, in the brick, or the cinder block, sorry. The second floor is, can be taken care of as kind of just bulky waste. So, EPA is now reviewing the report, and hopefully, they'll move forward. I think they do intend to take out a low-interest loan, or possibly get a grant from Wyndham Regional Commission in their cleanup funds. So, that's good.
They being the town.
No, they being the EPA.
They being the youth theater.
So, it would be, I know the fire department would love it down this winter. I'm sure they would, too, because it's a bit of a hazard. So, there's that. And then the other one is, there's the BMAC properties on Main Street, they're listed. We had the Phase 2 done. We had to do one additional air sample, and that led to some indoor air quality testing that we needed to do. They placed, or they took those samples last Monday.
Is that, sorry, is that the one down the Arch Street?
Nope. So, it's the, where Blue Moose is, and where the nail salon, so that it's the one-story, yeah, I mean, they have basements, but those one-story buildings on Main Street. They do also own the Arch Street building, but these are separate.
Okay.
So, anyway, it's at the lab now. We should hear in the next week or so, the results.
Just a quick question, so I can get a little background, since like this whole program was before. Anyway, I don't know like the context for this, is, how were these sites selected? Or like, how do they, did they apply for it? Or was it on some EPA register?
No, they pretty much come, you know, they hear about the program, either Wyndham Regional Commission, they've had a program for a long time, will refer them, or just conversations that we have with people interested in sites. So, that's how they come. And we have a brochure, you know, I think most people are, it's by word of mouth or something.
Okay.
And so, it's kind of been a first come, first served. Have conversations with a lot of people, and sometimes things never pan out, so. So, that's that. And then, the petroleum inventory, so that's, I sent you all the PDF version of it, so if you wanna spend any time with it, you can actually begin to look through it. But we did the PDF inventory, because we were having problems using the petroleum funds. We had applied for the petroleum funds, because we knew that the Hinsdale Bridge project was coming, and we thought that the town would get some of the land on the waterfront that's got the tank farm. We don't know where that's at at this point. The conversation had switched to, I think, the state trying to get a right-of-way over that land, maybe shifting the tanks on the property, and so, who knows? At this point, I don't think, I'm not anticipating that we're gonna need the funds for, for any work on that site. If it does happen, that'd be great, but if it doesn't... So, my EPA project manager had suggested we consider doing a petroleum inventory, so we hired one of our consultants, Sandborn Head. And this is the inventory. And honestly, it came last week, and I really haven't had time to go through it and figure out, you know, can we find an area of town that maybe we wanna do some area-wide planning with it?
Yeah, I think there's a lot here that we can ponder.
That's a possibility. That's one way we could use some more funds, is kind of pick some sites and figure out how we can...
Right. Yeah, so like, the equivalent of this EPA funding next year, could maybe go towards some of these things?
Well, these are petroleum, so they're two separate pots of money. It depends on what the guidelines say. They might be more flexible under this administration, where...
But, you know, oil and water don't mix.
So, Sue, sorry, I'm trying to understand this. So, basically, source of contaminant hazardous waste generator, like, so the assumption is that all the properties on this list, because of their previous possible uses, are potential petroleum sites?
Yes. Potential, that's the key. They may have a gas station.
We don't know that they're, yeah, all they do, this essentially is archival research. This is...
That's correct. That's correct. They did, they did drive-by sites, they looked at old Sandborn maps, they looked through the Vermont DEC records. That's all, it's just kind of a, it's all information that people could have found.
But the overall purpose is so that if any of these sites want to be remediated or redeveloped, this is, this will help them.
Yeah.
And the, just what, what is the D, like, D-040, D-001, D-002?
That's on the bottom left of the second page.
Oh, thank you. Oh, I see. Okay.
Okay.
And that suggests that they're not just petroleum.
Petroleum or petroleum compounds.
Oh, okay. So, all of these things...
A couple are from dry cleaners, though.
Are the Perk sites around here? Oh, yeah, the Tetra, they're at the...
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's interesting. Did that, that's okay. There's, it's interesting, there was a part of town that had a lot of dry cleaners, and it's basically the Elliot Street area, because the water was so abundant, it's where the water cures were. And then there was a bunch of dry cleaners.
Wow, interesting.
Is there a way, an easy way to just do like an overlay map of where all these sites are?
Yeah, that would be so helpful.
Just to be able to see on a map if they're all concentrated somewhere?
Yeah. No, that would be great. That might be something Rita in her office can, can do.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem like there's that many of them.
You know...
Well, it's a big list.
For the size of the town, I was kind of thinking...
There's only like, I don't know, 25?
Well, didn't they limit their scope, I guess?
We did. We did.
But didn't they say like, no West Bratton Borough?
Oh, yeah, there's no West Bratton Borough.
It was, no, there was...
Why did we say no? I didn't remember we said no.
No, Route 9's on there. Route 9, but there's not, you know, it's, it's interesting, because the Route 9 is kind of the existing gas stations. There's not, there's some Western Ave, Route 9.
Am I not seeing Putney Road?
It's, it's heard of the end. 44, 43, 42.
Oh, there it is, yeah.
Yeah, we basically did Route 9, Route 5, both Canal Street and Putney Road in downtown. I don't think they did the industrial areas, but... They did 142.
So, what was the limit of the scope then?
It was those, kind of those areas.
Yeah.
Because the idea was to try to look for...
And what, sorry, so the funds can be used for like a site assessment?
Yeah.
Site cleanup?
Nope.
No. So, just site assessment?
Site assessment and cleanup planning. So, we can do, we can do permitting, we can do visioning, like if, if somebody came in and said, "I wanna buy this property, this is what I wanna do, but I'm not really sure how to make it work." We could hire a consultant to kind of do some of that work. We could do larger-scale visioning. We could take, we could take a look at the bridge area. We could say to the property owner down there, "Hey, we know you might stay there, but we also know, you know, the state's trying to figure out what to do. Would you authorize us to kind of do a planning study of that waterfront area?"
Is there anything...
You know, kind of plan over their land.
So, it's plant, you're really plant, I'm just thinking, is there any like stormwater planning for the site, as it's currently used? You can, we can use it for something like that?
Well, that could get rolled into the planning, for sure. Yeah, the infrastructure is part of the planning. We could possibly take a look at, you know, the Flat Street area. That was an area where there was a lot of auto-related uses. I mean, a lot of the properties have turned over now, but Boys and Girls Club was an auto shop where the snow block is going, you know, probably Sunel, you know, that kind of whole area. We've done some of that planning with the EPA work, but, so I was trying to find other areas, you know, that could use it.
All right. And then, so same date we have till September 2019, do you use this money?
Yes.
It's maybe not likely. Do we have to give the money back, or does it...
Yeah.
Rolled into a next, you know, you have to give it back?
No, it'll go back. I mean, we don't technically have it. We draw it down. Yeah.
So, we should come up with a plan and spend the money? Is that what we should do? Or are we just gonna give it back?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we should come up with a plan.
I'm sure we'll come up with a plan by...
How much money would that be?
A hundred seventy...
Is that the kind of thing, you know, where like, would it make sense to reach out to all the property owners and say like, "Hey..."
Well, these are the, these are the petroleum ones, and there's less petroleum money, right?
No, no, there's 170,000, 160,000.
Well, is there a way that we can look at this in tandem with the downtown master plans, or it goes with some kind of plan? Or it goes with some kind of plan?
We can.
That's a great idea.
We can, unless there's another area of town, like, that we want to do some work on, but yes.
Yeah, I guess the other thing I was thinking is, is there an opportune moment? Like, is there someone who's thinking of selling? And we talked to the property owners correctly, that's a.
So, one of the other tasks that's not completed with this, but they're working on it, is a bunch of handouts, so FAQs about the program, and, you know. So, when we get that, we could do a mailing, or. Oh, that'd be great. Share that information.
Do we, do, do these people know they're on this list?
Not necessarily. But it's all public information.
So, they should be told?
Which happens a lot.
Does that scare you?
No, I'm just thinking, I mean, you know, that, there you are, sort of happily living your life, and you get a letter that says, "You're on a petroleum site, would you like to apply some money for a cleanup?" And you think, ah!
It's like, not for cleanups.
I see dead people, they don't even know they're dead.
I think, I mean, it's quick scan of this, so, you know. Anybody that knows their history of the building, you know, if you're down on Flat Street, and you're an old warehouse building, you might know. No, if you're not selling, maybe you don't care, like.
Yeah, there's no obligation from the business owners to participate in it.
Right, and this does not mean there's contamination, just because, you know, it just means there was some sort of.
And so, if someone would think, you know, well, this can be easily cleared up, and then I won't have this hanging over my property, then that would be great.
Right, right, but I remember the last time we talked about this, there was this, that I remember we had the exact same conversation, so I'll apologize in advance. There's some kind of liability, if you're the property owner, back in one step removed, right?
Yes.
Goes back to owners.
Right, right, when you're, well, that's when you're making a petroleum, when you're trying to get it into, use the EPA assessment funds, they're looking at back to property owners, so the current property and the previous.
But then, if, if there's something about, then you, it's, it's on you. If you bought it knowingly, or you bought it even unknowingly.
If you are liable and viable, so it's a two, they go back to property owners, and there's like, two, from there, you know, if you're a big gasoline company, or, you know, fuel company, and you owned it, you're the second in line, yeah, then you're probably gonna be found viable and liable. If you are a resident, and you bought something, you might not be viable, because you don't have the money to clean it up, and you could prove it.
It's kind of hard for Exxon to say they don't have new money.
Right. Okay. So.
Just, again, for the use of the funds. If a business that is already looking to develop a property that they own that is on this list, how might that money play into the work they're already doing? You said something about planning.
So, you're saying if, if you're, if you own the property, and you're trying to do something with it. We could definitely do planning for that, because in order to do kind of like a little area-wide plan, so, say there's like a little cluster, or like a half a block, or a block of, you know, buildings, we basically need a catalyst site, and so that could be the catalyst site, even if they're not planning on turning it over, we can still do planning.
Interesting. So, we can look at this list and consider sending them a letter, or what kind of planning, and if they're mapped, then we can see, you know, what there might be a group effort? That all sounds great.
Yeah.
There's this column here towards the right that shows the state's priorities, you know, the DEC environmental priority. So, I don't know if that's, you know, a totally authoritative, accurate guide that we want to follow, or consider it along with the town plan or other things.
I would say not.
Oh, really? Outdated, or it has different, like, measures than we might value?
Yeah, yeah, so, for example, like, a SMAC, Site Management Activities Complete, that indicates to me that there was a leak, they found the leak, they took care of it. It's not like a complete assessment of the site. So, in terms of DEC, you know, DEC has petroleum funds where they can go out, and on high-priority sites, they can start working to clean it up. And so, my guess, and I could check with them, but I think their environmental priority is kind of an indication of, okay, a SMAC was issued, that's not where we're gonna spend our money.
So, is a SMAC like a spill or an activity that's unrelated to the overall or underlying contamination?
Can be, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't mean that they did a thorough examination.
Right, it might mean that it was a gas station.
Situation to address, and they addressed that, but there could be underlying worse things, or nothing.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think it's actually the notes to the right in that are kind of explaining.
A little bit, yeah.
Well, that's great, we got homework.
What is our homework, we're supposed to read this thing?
If you'd like.
I would like the map, I really would like the map.
I will try to have a map for December.
There's three Flat Street properties listed on Route five, Canal Street area. I don't know if it's because that's where the globular designation goes.
Yeah, maybe, maybe that's how they did it, I would kind of consider that downtown.
Why are they highlighted?
I mean, I can. Why are they highlighted? That's a good question.
Things that you found interesting.
I did not highlight any, so.
I don't see it on the ledger.
Yeah, there's, it doesn't seem to, I don't think it explains the highlighting.
Maybe they chose them for us already?
I know, right?
This is one of the ones.
Oh, there were some recommendations.
I am wondering, I am wondering if these just buy a quick, well, that's not true. I was thinking if some of them are not in use, but.
Those highlighted represent properties, Sandborn recommends the town Brattleboro focus their efforts on.
Thank you very much.
So, the letter-writing idea is, we should give people, come off as least scary as possible, and give them an option to opt out.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's more of an option to opt in.
Yes.
They're already.
There's money available to invest in.
Yep.
Yeah, and, and it could be something that person hangs on to until they go to sell the property, and then, you know, okay, well, here's a potential resource, if this is a concern to the buyer. Because when they bought the property, you know, this kind of stuff wasn't necessarily done. The environmental laws have come a long way since two thousand and two, so.
Does it, does it in any way knock their property value to be on this list?
No, because it's all, but it's all, it's all out there.
It's not because it's the list, it's because of fact.
Yeah, right. Which would probably come out of inspection anyway.
So, if anybody does a title search or whatever, especially if the, the bank would require this type of investigation, so doing, us doing it for them is a savings in both time and money.
But this.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, you started first.
No, no, I've got a new thought.
I had the question of the inspection, this doesn't replace an inspection, though.
It does not, yeah.
So, then, maybe the opting-out idea is giving the business owners that made this list the option of taking their name off this list.
No, the list is not like something I like, you know, like, I'm not putting it anywhere.
I don't own property, I don't own property that had a gas station on it at one point, so I'm having a hard time putting myself in that position, you know, of, you know, being on here, so. I'm just trying to think of.
Yeah.
You know.
It, it's existing information, it's like, it's like the phone book, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's just kind of compiled, like, you can get on the library's website and pull up these Sandborn maps, I do it all the time, they're really cool. But it's all there.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, do, do we know anything about justification for their, their recommendations?
I have not, I mean, like I said, this came in, I haven't really read the report, but we can. I could be more prepared.
Because it's interesting to say.
I think we can intuit with the first one, the reasoning for the first one is.
Because it's a, because it's a farmer's market?
That's where the farmer's market is, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's what I was thinking, too, I thought, you know, maybe it's their sort of public service.
How long is that gonna be there, though? Yeah, people aren't gardening there, I mean, kids are, kids are playing.
That's actually, yeah, that is where this, that is not, that's, the farmer's market isn't there anymore. That is where the snow building is going. They did not come through our program, I had talked to them about it, I think they went another way.
Oh, is that the one right next door to?
It's the vacant lot in between the Sunel and the Girls and Boys Club.
Okay, it's gonna be a.
Housing.
Housing.
Yep.
Oh, Flat Street.
Okay, shall we look at that at our leisure and move on to review of a de minimis act? Two forty-eight application?
Who named these things?
I like de minimis applications.
Nothing to see here.
Sounds like a lawyer named it.
Yeah, it does sound like a lawyer named it.
Or a politician, because it's from statute. So, for this, we haven't gotten too many telecommunications applications before us in a while. And typically, what we do is, we bring them before the Planning Commission. If you want to make some comments, I'll end up writing a memo, and we'll pass it on to the Select Board, because the town does have a chance to comment on certificate of public good. So, we might see them for renewable energy, solar, we've seen them in the past, and telecommunications is generally what we see. I brought this one before you because I thought it was different. This is the first type of, this technology we've seen for telecommunications in town. So, it's basically being mounted on a telephone pole, kind of like a little repeater, or whatever.
And it's two feet tall.
Is that because it's five G?
And it's fourteen inches in diameter?
Is that because it's five G? And like, the higher the G is, the smaller the antenna, isn't that what happens?
I don't know, that's a good question.
But it does, sorry, just to ask a paranoid, it doesn't present any health issues, does it?
That actually, we leave that to Tom, but, actually, that is not something that's in our purview. And that's from the FCC.
I would have liked to have seen a picture. This picture doesn't seem to show, it shows all the existing things, but I don't see that it shows new things.
I don't know.
So, it's going to be, this actually is going to be, yours didn't come out very well, I'll pass it around, but it's at the corner of Allerton and Western Avenue, kind of near Exit Two. So, it's like, if you're going out west on Western Avenue, there's a house right there, and it's kind of just on the corner, is the location.
And this is what it's gonna look like.
This?
Of this.
Yeah, and then there's the other part, too, that's thirteen feet up.
Oh, let me pass this around.
So, why did you bring this to us?
In case you had any concerns, since we can't say anything about the potential health.
It could, you could be concerned about aesthetics. Let me pass these around, so you can see.
There's the frequency that it vibrates at.
Why did they take, why did they pick this hole?
I'd have to consult Wikipedia to see, to refresh what the, what sort of atoms that probably know that vibrates.
She's newer. So, this, it says the RRH, so it's a remote radio head. It says, "The antenna measuring approximately two feet tall and fourteen point six inches in diameter will be directly mounted, will be mounted directly on top of the pole. With its mounting hardware, the top of the antenna will extend approximately three feet above the top of the pole to a height of forty-five point eight feet."
This is nothing.
No, it's, is there, is there anything in here about, like?
The front of Allerton must not break.
Is it restrict anything being done around it?
No.
I don't see it.
No.
There's some. Which side of the highway is it on? Is it on the eastern side or the western side?
It's on the, well.
Toward downtown, around the east.
Is it in West Brattleboro, or is it in East Brattleboro?
It's in East Brattleboro.
Okay.
It's on the eastern side, yeah.
But you'll be driving past it.
No, I won't.
Well, only, only once a month to come to this meeting.
You just switch it off, huh? You don't even go to the grocery store, I guess.
No, that's not true.
So, I guess my, I have a question, like, the Horizon, does that mean, in terms of, like, cellphone service, it's only those people who have Horizon that will benefit from the booster here?
No, they share.
Other companies bounce off of Horizon. Particularly. All right, I think this may make my job much easier, because I can't use my cellphone in my house.
Maybe that's why it's there.
Yeah, there's a dead zone in that whole, like, area.
Yeah, we figured there, it must have been some sort of.
But there's, this is like three feet, so.
It is, I mean, I don't think there's any aesthetic impact, or anything to, you know, floodplains, clearly, or anything like that, but I thought it was, it was different.
The design on the sheet here, I mean.
Oh, that's better.
It gives a little bit more of a visual.
So, it's gonna, it's gonna sit on top of that?
This is, this is the top.
It's gonna change from this to that.
This is the top of that, and it's just this two to three feet here.
Plus all the cabling.
So, right now, it looks like this, and then it's gonna look like that.
And this, just from here to here, to it.
Yeah.
Do they have, do they have to? I mean, I can't imagine why we would, it's not in our plan.
I'm pretty sure that they are.
Maybe they could design it like a Maple Leaf.
Missy.
Because what, what does this thing do? I know it's for Horizon, cell service, and so it's like a cellphone.
It receives that. Yeah, it's the new kind of cellphone tower.
And there's already an existing one on that same pole?
No, there's, there's a telephone pole.
There's an existing PMT.
Yeah. What's PMT?
Well, I was assuming that was their current way to do it.
Who, does a town own the pole, or does?
GMP.
Yeah, GMP.
Utility owns a pole.
And they've obviously made an agreement, Horizon's made an agreement with.
Kate, in answer to your question, it's not clear to me that neighbors were notified. The certificate of notice has like the Department of Public Service Council, Green Mountain Power, the Select Board Chair, Department of Public Service, and the Clerk for the Public Utilities Commission. So, I'm gonna say, my guess is they are not notified of it.
Are we required to notify them?
We are not.
I mean, are some of them required to notify them?
I don't know.
I think if they were required, they would have.
They probably would, and I don't think it's like within our group's duties by just responding.
It's kind of odd, though, even if it's in a public right way.
Are we done with that, with everybody?
I'm okay with it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I brought it to you mostly because it's just a new technology that we're seeing in town, and so, they might, you know, if it's effective, maybe there's gonna be more of them, and maybe it'll improve the service.
And maybe we don't know, but is the technology new per se, or is it just like the size? It's, it's an old tech, it's current technology that's just more compact and formal?
It's a good question.
Just curious.
I do not know. If you are interested.
If you wanted to read all this, I bet you would tell us.
I did read all.
I didn't give you all the pieces, though, so there's some, there's some expert testimony filed, if you want to take a look at it.
I am, I am excited about the technology. I'm curious about taking this, this sort of standard wooden, designed very simply telephone pole, and then changing it to have something with all this cabling and other stuff attached to it in a residential neighborhood. I don't like how it looks, or I'm curious about, you know, how we, as a planning board, as new technologies come through and change sort of some of the really basic features like this, like, should we be more proactive, or should we just say, "Oh, yeah, sure, why not?"
It is an interesting question, I mean, think about it, at some point, there were no telephone poles, and all of a sudden, they go in, and I'm sure they were an eyesore. And it's like, so it's, it's a change, is it, is it a bad change?
There was the tall one we commented on, I think, that was probably before you had joined.
Yeah, yeah. The one over by Fiber Mark.
Yeah, they, they put one in on Putney Road area, and it was going to be visible from the interstate. Because it was just. And we did, we weren't locked shut, but we don't, we didn't vote, we just.
Well, you know, the whole field of visual impact was started by rural telephone, the introduction of rural telephone lines out in the country. And, you know, that was a significant impact on the landscape. But now, they're so ubiquitous, that they're really not a significant impact.
Right, but then this changes.
Yes, and it's just a matter of whether you consider it to be a de minimis change, or something greater.
Right, and one is not something greater, but if the companies are transitioning now to this sort of infrastructure, then do we want to think about?
I have to piggyback on that also being like, we don't really know exactly what this thing is. Like, obviously, it's like, you know, to help Horizon cellphone carriers, you know.
Need to know basis, well, Tom's gonna tell us.
I'm wondering, after, after how many needs are proposed and installed, do we want to say, "Okay, we should think about"?
I don't think you, I mean, I think if, if it's something you want to address, you need to address it from the start, because. Because I think the visual impact is probably greatest on its first one. It's kind of what Liz was saying, after a while, there was no adverse impact to the aesthetics and, because they were everywhere.
So exactly, I, exactly what is it going to look like? What we, we, we just hypothesized it was going to be a little pod sitting on top. Right, but what you're suggesting is a whole bunch of additional.
Yeah, this sketch here takes it from a simple wooden pole to something covered with.
A wooden pole covered with cable.
Wood cable in here.
It was like a whole bunch of conduit and like 90-degree conduits and stuff like that.
But how can we say no?
We shouldn't.
I don't think we should say no, I think we should definitely keep it going.
You could, you could register that you find that it has a significant impact on the, the visual and aesthetics of the town, but I don't think any of us do. Now, I've seen telephone poles in Apollo that were like, a telephone pole, and then wires, like crazy. And not only did it look scary, it looked ridiculous.
I think it looks amazing. Imagine like running cables through that?
Yeah. So this is like, although I don't, I don't know, I don't know.
A nice wooden pole covered with all sorts of stuff looks different from a nice wooden pole.
What would the alternative, like what would we, what would you add?
Can I see the whole of the color feature?
A casing over it that makes it look still like a wooden pole, or, you know, do they plant something around it to make it, like what was it, do we do, what can be?
It's going to look like, it's going to look like this. No, it's going to look like this.
If you get enough of these though, you can get rid of all the telephone wires.
They're going to cover the wooden pole with all this goobly-gook.
They're going to add, they're going to add things, attach them to the pole.
And run them out of the pole. Which will be.
It's going to be.
It looks like.
Noticeable.
Some important countries where they just get the whole landline.
Paint it particular colors, is it?
Let's see if we can pull it up.
Yeah, they can do it if they just paint all the cabling green.
We want candy. Candy, candy.
You should have brought some polling.
You know, I think all that's kind of gilding the lily, it is what it is.
Gilding the lily?
Is that great?
Well, a lily is lovely, and why gild it?
Okay, all right.
I'm just going to see if I could actually find a picture.
If I can, I'm going to, I'm going to sing.
That's a, that's a really good idea.
It's just an hour off, right? It's like five minutes to seven.
Yeah, it's five or seven.
Okay, are we ready to move to signs?
So are we going to, well, I mean, if we wanted to make a comment about the color of the wires or something like that, we could submit something.
I don't feel personally like to do so.
Yeah, I don't have any, it's one of those things where it's like, I don't, I often think like, do you need to solve a problem before the problem exists? You know, I feel like we had another one of these, or like, you know, there's a point which.
Okay, so let's just think, if they all were like that, would we have a problem with that?
Do we, do we have design standards for telephone poles?
We do not. We have nothing in the town plan, which is all going to be things that weaken our position in terms of making them, I mean, you can still make the comments.
Could we consider a future discussion around something like that?
Well, doesn't the Public Utility Commission deal with this?
Yes.
For an aesthetic?
But I.
Well, so how does it happen that some of the ones that you get, like, that end up having to look like trees, is that the Public Utility Commission, like?
It could be an aesthetic concern, and therefore.
Because it's a forested area.
On a hilltop, yeah.
This is two more feet, and wires leading up on the pole.
It's the wires leading up on the pole.
Yeah, that you're driving by and walking by.
Yeah, and the pod sitting on top of the pole doesn't seem as remarkable, but, I mean, I would think it would be, it's, it would really change the urban, 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 whatever scape.
Townscape.
Townscape, to have all of our telephone poles have these large conduit wires hugging them, I think.
Well, think about all the telephone poles that have, you know, transmitters on them. There's a lot of them, and there's a lot of different equipment on a telephone pole already, so.
Sue, is there a comment? Like, is it 30 days or something?
Yeah, I mean, this we would have to resolve tonight.
Okay, because then my next question is going to be, is there, we do low research to see if there's ever been any other communities that have like?
I'm going to pass one around that I think is probably closest to, you know, what we're looking at, as I try to go through there.
Can they mitigate? Like, can you say, can you do something where you say like, okay, yeah, that's fine, but you need to provide us fancy signs for everyone to put up?
Can we ask them how many, how many more?
You have to give us 10 years of free Verizon service.
This is what's before us.
Yeah.
You either like it or you don't.
It could be.
And if we say yes, do we set a precedent where any other thing?
No, we don't set a precedent.
Yeah, Kayla can't see the, what, how they've changed the pole.
I can reach out to the applicant and say, you know, we're struggling a little bit to visualize the wires, like, could you send us a?
Picture.
Picture of one, I could try to do that.
Could you also, if you're going to do that, could you also ask if they've had any communities, request particular aesthetic changes, or, you know what I mean?
I can, they might not tell me that.
I think this is a completely nothing thing, but you're all welcome to think otherwise.
Thanks. And I'm sure you will.
We've dealt with Brian Sullivan on other stuff, if you want to, you know, if you think it would help to see a picture, I can ask him, like.
Yeah, I'm sorry to be a party cooter, but it would be a decent.
We can just see how it goes, and then take, stand on the next one and say, oh gosh, it's awful, and.
Why don't we all take a look at what's on various telephone poles around town, because they're not all as pristine as you guys are imagining them to be. Let's go into signs, so we can get out of here.
I have some guilt, but.
It'll be gone by the time you get.
What are you singing?
You know, Ralph Lauren.
I know, but anything?
Oh God, we're singing all kinds of great songs from Michael Settle. And of course, I can't think of any right now.
Okay. All right, signs are back. Let's see, I can't read through my stuff. We have been.
It seems like we've been working on this for a while.
We have, but we keep our script. We're going to get it right. Okay, so the first thing I want to talk about, just go through a couple of quick things. The last time we were concerned about political signs, and Liz, you thought there was a state statute, and that is correct, so I have taken out the one saying, there is still the exemption from, for the state for political signs in, where is it? Anyway, we're all in compliance with state statute on political signs. Let's see, I can't, I cannot find that right now. Okay, one of the ones that I forgot to talk to you about, the last meeting, has to do with signs in the mixed-use zoning districts, so if you look on page three, 319E is the sign zones, and I have just, if you guys can share.
Sign zones.
Sign zones. So the mixed-use zoning district, I want to propose that we move it from sign zone three to sign zone two. And the little map that I kind of put before you, and when you guys are done with it, maybe you can look for Kate illustrates, on Canal Street in particular, we have a couple of different sign zones, and they're kind of small zoning districts where it changes from neighborhood center, which is zone one, into mixed-use, which is zone three, into residential neighborhood, and it kind of keeps changing back and forth, and there's some, kind of some small differences, and it seems for consistency's sake, it would be good to move mixed-use into zone one. You would get a slight increase in the, in the building-mounted sign area, so it would go from 1.5 square foot per building frontage to two, so it would allow that to be a little bit bigger. You'd get some extra signage allotted if you had upper-story commercial, so two-story building, you'd get some more if you had two commercial uses in it, like something on the second floor, so that's positive. The freestanding area goes from 16 square feet to 12 square feet, so it is smaller, however, we're trying to make the mixed-use more pedestrian-friendly, less car, you know, dominated, so I think that's a positive change. And it's consistent with what you're allowed in the neighborhood center or the urban center, which are kind of the two biggest districts along the Canal Street corridor. And then you get a smaller freestanding height, so in the mixed-use right now, your freestanding sign can be at 10 feet high, as opposed to six feet in zone one, and, I mean, if you know, the buildings in the mixed-use zoning district, there's, they're not set back very far from the road, so having it up 10 feet seems really high and not really pedestrian-scaled. So I'd like to propose that we move that from zone three to zone one. Brian, sometimes when he's handing out permits, they're like, whoa, why is my sign smaller than what's allowed in my next-door neighbor? And it just happens to be that we're in a different zoning district, so.
So I'm sorry, we're talking about Canal Street, is it Pine Street through to Main Street?
It's, the mixed-use zoning districts is.
All the.
It's not all the way down, there's a couple of residential neighborhood breaks, and there's an institutional with the hospital, but they kind of have their own.
Well, I'm trying to have the chartreuse, I think, right?
Yes, yeah. And there's a couple of other mixed-use zoning districts in the town, but this is where it was kind of illustrated the most. We have mixed-use on Bird Street, Flat Street, we have it around the Commons, and so I just think the, particularly when it comes to the freestanding signs, the changes are more positive for the look and the feel and the pedestrian kind of orientation that we're going for.
Sounds great.
Yeah, that sounds good. Is that something we have to vote on, Julie?
Nope.
Okay, what's next?
So the next one, I fixed up the blade signs to what we had discussed, so that is really nothing we need to talk about there. The next one is the distinctive signs.
Yay, distinctive.
Distinctive signs are on page 10.
That's the catch-all. Get out of jail.
All right, so I've probably gone a little bit further, we were struggling about, you know, how, how it would work the last time. I tried to consolidate the criteria, I added that it will not adversely affect public safety, including traffic and pedestrian safety. And the other thing that I added is under the applicability, so basically it's saying you can apply for a building-mounted sign, because you can put art in your front yard, so if your sign is art, that's, that's okay, you're going to meet the ground-mounted signs. I think that there's no problem with the ground-mounted, it's more of the wall that's an issue, or the projecting signs. And so that means, and it would, it could be for signs that don't conform to the standards of the urban center, village center, neighborhood center, mixed-use, and waterfront. I don't think we really want to get too funky in the service center in, in granting something that doesn't comply, that's, you know, where.
That's like a license to mischief.
I, I feel that way. But I think where we really want to be distinctive is kind of in these pedestrian areas, or kind of cool hip areas.
I like this, because it, it gives the Development Review Board, you know, the conditional use approval, but, and there's standards for conditional use, so works for me. You mind if I have any?
I think it's good.
The third month's a charm, Sue.
Nice to know.
Is that it?
There's, that's it for signs.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, well, you buy your house group home here. This is a change because of the statute, so I struck out the word, so if you have a residential group home that's licensed by the state, serving not more than eight residents, it's considered a permitted, it's a byright use of a single-family dwelling. There used to be a provision where you couldn't have group homes within 1,000 feet of each other, and last year in the legislative session, they did away with that, so this is just a compliance with statute change.
And so handicapped or disability, it's not anything more than that?
No, but disability is pretty broad. It's not a, not just physical disability, it could be mental health.
Well, does this include addiction treatment residential similarly?
It can, I think that they can, it needs to be state-licensed, so, for example, Phoenix House recently was trying to locate in Bellows Falls, there's appeals of that decision, the zoning administrator's decision, they pulled out, they have limited resources, so they came to Brattleboro, they found a location in Brattleboro. They don't fall under their group home because they're not like state-licensed, but they did find a location, and they've been permitted, the appeals are aware, and they're good. So, so yeah, it just depends if the group home is state-licensed, I guess, so.
Ah, sorry.
Okay, so the historic resource overlay, I didn't send anything out to you on that, but you can briefly talk about it. We've tied that to the historic districts in town, there's four historic districts. The design review for the committee, sorry, the, the group of three people that review designs that come before the historic, that have fallen under the historic resource overlay, would really like it to not be linked to the National Register. I've kind of been, I had a meeting with them on Friday, and I'm kind of playing it over and over in my head, because when we did that district, we were explicitly tied it to the historic National Register historic districts. And so there's language throughout that said, it says, if you're a non-contributing structure, if you're a contributing structure. So they had suggested that I remove kind of the first sentence of the purpose statement, which says, "The historic resource overlay district encompasses all National Register historic districts in Brattleboro." The more I got to working with it, was like, well, that really was not our intent.
If you take out the federal's listing, then you want to rely on the state list, or do you want to?
No.
Because if you rely on local historic, then you have to have your own set of standards.
Yes, so they're fine applying it to the, the districts that we have on the overlay map right now, which is Clark Canal, Horton Homestead, Downtown, and West Brattleboro Village. But they would prefer, or some of them would prefer, that we kind of designate these areas locally, because there is some thought that if you tie local regulations to the National Register, then people won't want to be on the National Register. They'll see it as a stick rather than a carrot. So that's part of the concern.
Okay, well, that just requires a lot of more work for the, this group to do, to establish standards for local historic designation.
Which we've talked about. This group doesn't feel like they should do that, because their charge is kind of.
Yeah, they want someone else to do it.
The design, they would like to see a preservation committee, a local preservation committee kind of partner with the Historical Society to kind of find out what the town cares about. So what we did in setting this up is we said, you're in a National Register historic district, that means, you know, you've got some important architecture or history that should be preserved. They, the argument is that there's lots of other neighborhoods in this town that people might value, and it could be not just because of its historic character, it could be. value, and it could be not just because of its historic character, it could be the architecture, something more with architecture. Because to get on the National Register, it doesn't have to be an architectural, important architectural, it might be on the National Register because something important happened in that district, not just because it's really nice architecture.
Associated with an historic person or event.
Yes.
I don't understand why it would ever be a stick.
Because somebody might not want to list their house on the National Register, because then they have to, if you are a single-family homeowner, or, you know, duplex or whatever, and you want to...
Put aluminum siding on it.
Change your siding, change your windows.
There's more stability.
All of that gets, yeah, there's more restriction.
I'm pretty sure the federal designation doesn't put any limitations at all.
It does not.
It's the town's zoning rules.
Yes.
Oh!
So, yeah, it's, people may mistakenly think that the federal designation limits them, but all it is, is just like a pat on the back.
Yeah. I mean, if there is, again, it's kind of like if there's a federal project, like a federal road project coming through, they might have to treat you differently, because you're...
Well, or if you can get federal historic tax benefits, for example, if you were to restore your windows rather than replace them.
For businesses, right?
Yes. Also for residents, if it's like more than three units, not for a single family.
Like a profit-making business.
Yeah. So I appreciate the concern, they don't want it tied to the National Register, I'm just not sure exactly how to decouple it when throughout the section, we're saying whether it's a contributing structure or a non-contributing structure. If we remove that first, because those are terms from the National Register, so if we remove that first sentence, then we have to figure out, does it apply to everything in there?
I tell you what, if you're gonna have a consultant start to do the work on, on the other part, the other, they can also look, look at that and edit that out correctly.
So we don't have to do it right now?
Well, I mean, you could, but it's neither Sue nor any of ours area of expertise.
Yeah, and for me, I'm like, I know it needs to be done, and, you know, we kind of put this in because we wanted to enact some, get it started. I agree with the Design Review Committee members that say there are lots of other areas of town that people, neighborhoods that people live in that they might feel is important, and they might be interested in being under here as well. So I think more work needs to be done. I guess what we have right now is working, it might not be the best system, but until we have more information, we kind of can't, I feel funny tweaking it, because I think it's not a simple change that we're trying to go for.
What, what did the D R V want to do by changing that?
The D R C? Yeah, no, it's confusing. They, they wanted to not have it linked to the National Register.
Because that's scary. But it's not in actuality.
Now, the, the historic districts in town that are already national-registered on the list, this, if you take that off of the statute, it's not gonna affect them, they'll still be able to get their historic district tax credits and everything else. So if someone has a historic structure and they want it to be nationally listed, they can still pursue that. But the local district will have more friendly language to recognize things that we ourselves deem as valuable.
Right, right. So I'd, I'd actually like to leave it as it is for now, I agree, I mean, if we've got a consultant onboard to do some of this historic stuff, I think it's a little bit... We have some plans to kind of start that work at the end of the year. I had West Brattleboro Village on here, we can talk about it tonight, it's not a, we can also talk about it at the next meeting, it's not something super pressing, and I think that it's probably an effort that we need to do some outreach with West Brattleboro Village, so I don't necessarily see it.
We've got ten more minutes.
What is it about?
So Melrose Terrace is going to be, you know, they're working to move the remaining 25 people out of the floodplain.
Oh, yes, I had a big discussion about this the other day.
There is, you know, they're going to be demolishing part of the property. We have it in a residential neighborhood, they are not going to be able to demolish everything, and they're likely not to get the funding to kind of be able to. Some of it's still floodplain, so what becomes of those remaining buildings? Is it zoned residential neighborhood, is that appropriate? Is, are there other uses that, to reuse, adaptively reuse those buildings? Get your milk.
Thank you, I gotta... Old town notion.
I'm gonna forget it now. So that's what it's about, is kind of looking at the zoning in the West Brattleboro Village area, and seeing if we still want to keep it in residential neighborhood, since we know it's going to be changing, because the residential won't be there anymore.
So what are you, what are we considering, residential slash?
It could be residential, but some of it's in the floodplain, so is that, is that great? Are there commercial uses that would be good there? And if so, then state, keeping it in the residential neighborhood is not a good zoning district for it, maybe, maybe extending the village center, maybe looking at waterfront or something.
Is there a zoning district that says floodplain, do not build?
There's an overlay district.
There's a waterfront.
Yeah, there is the waterfront zoning district, too. So that's the...
So at the next meeting, you'll give us more stuff and background for us, and now we can just...
So this is basically the property, this is Melrose Terrace over here, about a bunch of these properties here, closest to the brook, are gonna be demolished. At some point, the remaining 25 units where people are living are gonna be relocated somewhere, and so what becomes of this property?
The people are gonna be relocated, or the buildings are gonna be relocated?
The people, the buildings are gonna stay.
The Red Clover Commons is where they've been relocated to, right?
Right now, yeah, and they're gonna, they're gonna build a second one, so.
It's, my first thought is that, you know, didn't we tell them not to build in the floodway, so therefore it shouldn't be zoned for something else?
Yeah, I mean, if we don't want people living in the floodplain, then maybe we...
Then don't, don't have people living in the floodplain.
Don't zone it for that.
They can't...
Maybe it could be a farm.
It used to be a farm.
Well, you know... Or, or recreation. Like the West River Park.
There's part of it that...
It's a public housing spot, and there are going to remain something upwards of five fairly large brick structures.
Just out of the floodplain.
Yeah.
So some of them are still in, they're out of the floodway.
Yeah, I mean, it might get, it might get, because part of the reconstruction is to actually dig out the brook, because the brook was filled in when they put the thing in there, so they're gonna dig it, they're gonna try to bring it back to its original, so potentially the brook will then hold the water, even in a...
So the challenge of it is, is that it's public housing, and this, the feds won't pay to knock down the buildings. I mean, this was part of a, the ones that are being knocked down is part of a FEMA grant, but those were floodway properties, they're probably not gonna spend millions to knock down the remaining. So then what becomes of those buildings? Do we want people living there? Because then the residential, we know it floods, you know, might improve a little bit, but the residential neighborhood only allows really residential uses. Or could it be used, could it be a little campus? Could it be artist studios, or school, or something where people aren't living there and then can get out? And so we just need to kind of plan for that area of...
Well, can we think about that?
Well, the West Brattleboro Association has been working on this for quite some time.
Yeah, I think maybe...
Why do we have a say in this?
Because we do the zoning.
We do the planning around here.
But we should, I think we do need to...
But I can't decide if they're artist studios or to revise a property.
No, you're right, but, but right now, the zoning district that's there wouldn't allow those kind of non-residential uses.
Can we ask people in the West Brattleboro Association, I could think of that, what their thoughts are, and take those...
I'd be happy to share those with you, I'm a member of the West Brattleboro Association.
And, yeah, no, they have, they have, they've been working with Chris Hart to come up with a plan for what to do with the building, and changing the zoning is part of the plan.
So was the original plan to take those buildings down, right?
There's, the plan has to take, they have to take the 11 buildings down, because they're in the middle of the floodplain, and there's, and it's costing something like $3.1 million to take them down.
I'll do it for a million.
So the rest of them, they're...
I'll get out of there right now.
And there's not state funding that could use for demolish the rest?
No, because, because they're...
Because they're not in the floodway.
Yeah, they're not in the floodway. And, and the HUD is gonna sell them to a nonprofit for a dollar, and the question is what to do with those buildings. Chris Hart wants to establish a nonprofit to buy them.
Who's Chris Hart?
She's the head of the Brattleboro Housing.
Who's there right now.
She has her office there, and she's the one who's managing, she's been working, managing on this, this entire thing, she's got the FEMA people and everything else working. So changing the zoning would be helpful, because it can, yeah, it's not...
I mean, I know you can speak on behalf of West Brattleboro Association, but if you feel like it might be helpful to have them here in December, or, I don't know.
Sure, I can, we have a, we have a trustee meeting on Thursday, actually, so I could bring it up if somebody from the, from the association wants to come and present.
I think that would be nice.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll ask them.
I really like the idea of not tearing down buildings that we don't have to tear down.
They're, they're pretty, too, they're really pretty, I mean, and they are historic, right?
They are historic.
Because they're over 50 years old.
Yeah, they are.
I'm historic, too, okay.
Who wants to make a motion?
I'm going to get the milk.
Well, introductions in order?